Understand and explain. The self-concept, determine internal and external influences. On consumer behavior and explain the sequence of the consumer decision process. So, let us start off. Firstly, what's consumer sovereignty? Consumer sovereignty sovereignty is the right of the individual consumer to spend the money, his money the way he wants. Uh so goods and services produced will be determined by what the consumer wants. What we are seeing here essentially is that it is not right for the businessman. To go and start producing what he thinks he likes. He has to produce what the consumer wants. And um so the consumer is king basically and cannot be forced to spend his money. On what, on anything he doesn't want, basically. So, there are different rights that are available to the consumer as you've said. The first one is uh the right to safety. So, the consumer um has a right that when you are producing your product. Your products will not harm the consumer. So, you have to be sure that whatever you are putting out there. For instance, uh the pharmaceutical companies have to make sure that their drugs are tested over and over again. To be sure that um they are not going to harm the the consumer. For instance, you know with this COVID nineteen virus, I'm sure many of you have. Um, many of you have um heard about the countries who. Who went ahead and paused the vaccination uh in Europe because they had some concern. Some concerns about the safety of the people who are using the vaccines. So also, um there are different laws in different countries that protect consumer safety. Um, the second right of the customer is the right to be informed. So, um if your product is going to have side effects, you have to tell the 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 um consumer. So you have to inform them that if you use this product, this may be one of the things that may happen. Yes, I'm seeing somebody raising their hand. Is that a mistake? It seems to have dropped it. Okay. Now, another right of the consumer is the right to choose. So, you can't force consumer to to buy what you want. You have to um allow the customer to choose what he wants to choose. And the final right on consumer is the right to be heard. So he will buy something and he's not happy with it. As a producer, you have to listen to him. And make sure that eventually he um gets satisfied at the end of the day. Alright. Now, let's also look at what we call the marketing concept. Um, the marketing concept is one that has a consumer, a customer orientation. So basically, what that means is that customer um is is the main focus of the marketing concept. Everything that we do in marketing is about the customer and about satisfying the customer. Um, another element of marketing concept is that is an integrated company effort. What we mean by that is that everybody in the company, everybody in the business, every member of staff, even up to the gates man. Must be practicing a consumer focused orientation. So everybody must be thinking about how to satisfy your customer. You understand? So it's integrated, the entire company, you know, is working towards the same goal, which is to satisfy the customer. And the third um wonder is that it is uh profit. Profit is the goal rather than sales. So it's not just about selling. It's about selling and making a profit. Because in a lot of businesses, actually, um my, many small businesses and micro businesses that we have in Nigeria. A lot of people are focusing more on selling. Let me just say, let me just sell. But I did thinking about profit. Small them may not be making profits. It may seem that they are making margin on everything they sell. But at the end of the day, if you don't consider their costs and um if you look at their costs, they are running um. The 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 what 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 the the input that they are putting in. Then they may not just be making any profit at all and they may just be thinking that they are. So, um profit is an element of the marketing concept. Now, in order to implement the marketing concept, um the first thing we have to do is that the cost, the customer has to. I'm I'm coming, sorry. Sorry, hold on, I'm trying to. Alright, sorry. There has to be a change in management attitude. That must be the first thing that must happen. Because management has to change from just sales. The only man thinking has to change from just sales to having the customer satisfaction as his ultimate goal. Um, the second thing is that the firm's organizational structure has to change. So before, if you were. You know, making more, if you're you're hiring more technical staff, you need to start hiring more customer relations staff. So that the customer can be heard and you can know what is happening to whether they are happy or not and make changes when necessary. And then number three is that you have to change, there has to be a change in management methods and procedures. So, so also the management has to um try to make sure that that um they are focusing on what the customer wants. Oh, I'm just hearing that. You can't hear me. Can you hear me now? I'm just seeing a chat now that you can't hear me. Is it, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Florence. Alright, so now. Um, we have to look at consumerism and the marketing and see that, okay, what the consumer wants and the consumer's rights. Is it always affected by marketing activities? Because at the end of the day, the marketer is concerned with profits and the consumer is concerned with what with getting satisfaction for the product that he wants. So, you know, there are places where the two of them appear to have issues. You know, the marketer and the consumer. And the first one is in product policy. You know, um are the products actually what the customer wants? Or is the marketer just trying to force his products on the customer? That's an area where customers, uh the consumer and the marketer may have issues. Another area they may have issues is in pricing practices. So is the price right for the consumer? Is it above what the consumer can afford? Is the consumer buying the product at a premium? Uh, these are all issues that need to be considered by the marketer. Um, the third place where the consumer and the marketer usually have issues is in advertising. So marketers, you know, being, being a zillos may try to, you know. To claim that a product may be able to do what it cannot. Uh, we've seen that happen a few times. Uh, especially in the pharmaceutical industry, where you will see somebody saying, oh, my painkiller will kill all your. Your pain and then you take it and you are still feeling pains. Also in a um. For instance, another example is the is um the disinfectants, you know. Many, many get a soap where it's, where it come in myself. American there so kills ninety-nine percent of all germs. And that may not really be true because nobody can really test that. Um, another area where consumers and marketers have problems is when products, you know, pollutes. Pollutes the environment. For instance, when vehicles, um you know that in the US. They 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 had to cut vehicle emission because the customers, the consumers were worried that. You know, um the exhaust films coming out from the vehicles were killing, was cleaning the environment. So the midlaws that, you know, uh forced producers of vehicles to reduce emissions from their, their, from the exhaust pipes. Uh, another area where they have problem is in terms of packaging. You know, a lot of consumers are fighting more now for reusable packaging, uh or biodegradable packaging. You know, which may be more expensive to produce for the, for the producer and the marketer might have a bit of issue there. Um, the last area is in truth in lending. You know, when uh some products are collected on, on, on credits and the consumer. Thinks that he's um getting premium by collecting it on credit, but actually the marketer has. Has built in the interest rates of uh of the period when the consumer has not paid. So there are maybe issues there as well. Alright, so why do we study consumer behavior at all? Um, the first reason why we study consumer behavior is that it can be used to develop an effective marketing strategy. Uh, another one is that uh consumer behavior can be used to regulate marketing practice. So that marketers are not doing just anything they like. Uh, the last one, I mean, the third one is that is uh they need to bring into practice socially decided behavior by marketers. So by the time you know what your consumer is going to, how you're going to behave, it will also guide how you you will behave, you understand? So, um. Organizations also, uh organizations of various descriptions are applying theories and information about consumer behavior. On a daily basis in that showmaking. Yes, um a lot of the showmaking that. Uh, businesses do is based on consumer behavior, based on what they studied that their customer is doing. Um, knowledge of consumer behavior is important for influencing product purchase decision. And also decisions on non-product uh issues. So if. If, as a customer, if you understand how other people are going to behave. It also helps you to pick what you are going to buy, what what products you want to to buy for yourself. Um, and then there's also the need to collect correct information about specific consumers. Which are relevant to marketing decisions of our organization. So what we mean by that is that. Um, by studying consumer behavior, you are going to be getting current information. What the consumer wants to be. And you know what the consumer wants to do, changes over time. So we need to be, we need to continue to study consumer, to continue to know what they want and how the trends of what they want are changing. Now, to apply consumer behavior, um is applied, consumer behavior is applied in marketing strategy. Uh, which we'll talk about in a few, in a few minutes. Um, is also applied in regulatory policy by governments, you know. By time governments know that, okay, this is, for instance, what the consumer, these are what the consumer trends are. Then um they can now try to formulate policy uh for, from, from legal regulations that will make sure that. When the consumer, when the producer is trying to produce this thing, it's producing it to certain um standards. You know, we don't really have much of that in Nigeria, but uh. Sorry about that. We don't really have much of that in Nigeria, but in more developed countries, there is a law of regulation to make sure that. The products that are being produced are produced at a certain standard. Um, consumer behavior can also be used for social marketing, uh which is, you know, marketing through um. By getting through what the, you know, um what the society wants or the societal norms and cultures. So if your marketing is going to go against societal norms or site or customs or culture. Then uh by studying consumer behavior, you will know where you are going to go wrong. And uh you'll be able to avoid all those pitfalls that may come from uh cultural norms. Um, the last way that consumer behavior can be applied is that it keeps individuals informed. Uh, when we say individuals, we also mean the 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 businesses or marketers. It gives them inform of what is going on uh in the market. As I said, we're going to study, we're going to discuss marketing strategy and consumer behavior. Now, look at this diagram. You can see the different elements of marketing strategy and how it is formed. So it starts with um marketing analysis. For every business that um that wants to take off. They always stick off here. They have to first analyze the market. We will still discuss each of these elements one by one as you go further. This is it. So you can see that the step for marketing analysis, it goes to marketing segmentation. And then you now have marketing strategy formulation. And then once the marketing uh strategy has been formed, it should inform customer decision. Uh, they, they should, it should kickstart the customer decision process. And uh and then from, once the, 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 the customer decision process has been, has been completed. Then we have outcomes, which is individual, firm or society satisfaction. But we'll discuss each of these elements one by one uh as we move forward. Now, so market analysis, um. There are different kinds of tools that we use for marketing analysis and many of these tools, I would just mention them here, but. Uh, over the course of the the semester of the session, we'll look at each of these tools uh. One by one as, as you go along, but for this study session, I'll just mention them so that you can be aware that we have these tools. So the first tool that we use is SWOT. Uh, SWOT analysis is used to, to determine the company's strengths, weaknesses. And also look at opportunities and traits that are open to the company. And I said, we won't go too deep into it. We just, uh, I'll just mention them and we'll move on. Another tool is best tool. Uh, and then the last one we have there is five forces. So there are still many more, there are still many more, but I just wanted to mention some of the more common ones that we use. Uh, especially in Nigeria here. Now, once you have done your analysis and you have identified um what you think you want to produce. You have looked at what you, what your capabilities are and um. So let's go back to analysis. What, what you gain from analysis is that you understand what your capacity is as a company. You understand uh where your expertise is, you understand what you, you want to, what the market needs. You understand, you understand what the market needs. You will be able to know whether your product that you are trying to introduce into the market, if it is what the customer wants or not. So all those things, all those information will be gotten from market analysis. Please, after you have gotten all that information, the next thing you have to do is to segment your market. And the reason why we segment our markets is because we don't, we can't, there's no way to sell to everybody. You have to, um, you have to decide who you want to sell to. Because you're, there's no company, I think, in the world that probably has capacity to sell to everybody. So, yes, we have big companies that may be able to afford to buy products, but their products may not be, having to sell products globally. But their products may not be for everybody. For instance. Um, if we say, if we say, if we look at it kind of like Apple, for instance. If you look at it coming like Apple. We can look at, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look for the chat. Uh, we do, okay, we look at it coming like Apple. Apple, you would say is a global company. It has riches, products are sold in every country in the world. But Apple products, as you know, are not for everybody. You know, why? Because they're expensive. They are, they are, they are expensive. So not just everybody can access it. Obviously, we have techno phones. Techno phones are, who like techno and Infinix are a bit cheaper. So, but is, and you think they are for everybody? They are not for everybody. Because the products are rich and the elite will probably not use a techno phone because they will feel that is beneath them. So there's no product that is for everybody as such. So because of that, you have to segment your market. And the steps to segmenting market as follows, you have to first identify the product. You know, I said for marketing analysis, you would have seen uh the product that you are trying to, to, what you will have got information on what. The, the consumers really want and whether your product is going to sell or not. We have to identify um your product and say, okay, this is my product and this is what my product. This is, yeah, you, there are kinds of people that can, that can, these are the kinds of people that can use my product or that need my product. So you have to first ask that question. Why do you put I need my product? And then as well you have identified those needs, those food I needed. Then you now start to group them. Now, okay, if uh the people that need it, for instance. Uh, if we look at the example of the iPhone, why do people that need iPhone? People that need iPhone are the trendy people who want to probably uh show off a little. You know, maybe they just have a little bit of money and they just want to show off. Because I don't think anybody buys an iPhone because it is very, very functional, you know. But yes, it's secure and it's a bit high class. So you know that um the people that will buy. An iPhone, a bit of high class. So you start to group them, but not every high class person will buy iPhone. There are some that prefer Samsung. You understand? So it depends on what you need. If you need more, a more open platform where you can quickly have more apps. Then you are probably more of a Samsung person. But if you prefer the secure platform. Where, you know, you can only get your apps from a certain uh place, then you might be looking more at iPhone. Okay, you understand? So in the marketing segmentation, you start to group them. Now, okay, you got people that will probably. Want to buy Samsung and these are probably who I want to buy um iPhone. Now, and but altogether, they are more of the high-class people, you understand? But even within the high class, you can still segment who the people that want iPhone and the people that want Samsung. Then you have to now describe them. Okay, so these people, what are, what kind of lifestyle do they have? The people that want Samsung, what kind of lifestyle they have? Are they more of the free people that are just, you know, going to club every night and. Uh, really socializing or and all that, or the iPhone people, are they more of the businessmen? You know that uh need to transact deals in, you know, region. So you try to describe uh. Um, what's each group? You know, their demographics, their lifestyle, you know, the kind of media they use. You just try to describe them as much as possible. It's, it's actually inexhaustive. You cannot exhaust it, but. You can just try as much as possible to describe what each group uh is like. And then once you have grouped your people and you have described them, then you now have to select the ones that, the group that you are going to face. So that you can target your marketing towards that group. So by doing that, you will have been able to successfully segment your market. So, um, once you have segmented your market and you have your target market set, set up, you already, you described them. You know where they are, you know where they like to hang out. That's the sociographic. Geographic is location. You know where they are, you know where they like to hang out. That's sociographic. Demographic, you know they are Adrian. You know how they behave. Psychographic, you know how they think. So once you have those things, all that information. Then it becomes easy to now introduce what we call the marketing mix. Um, I, I don't know if you people have heard of the marketing mix. I think we, we, we touched on it in. Yes, we did, we did touch on it in year three. Um, so the marketing mix is made up of, you know, uh at the most basic level, four Ps. Promotion, price, place and product. Uh, but as we go on, I think later on, because we will discuss the, as, as more research has gone in. We've been able to identify some more keys, but at the most basic level, we have these four Ps. So once you have all this information about your target market, you know how much they are willing to spend on your product. So you are able to fix your price. You know where they hang out. So you are able to determine how you, you get from your factory to where they hang out. Where they go, where they are likely to go. And then you know how to, how to, how to design your product. You know that, oh, these people will probably like things in red and you'll probably like it to be big or to be small or you understand? So that information helps you know how to design your product. And then of course, how to promote it, how to advertise it to them. You know, whether you need to use uh uh sales promotion or you need to use a. Um, just mass, mass advertising. These are all things that we'll treat later on during the course. This is just an introductory uh session. Um, please, if you have any questions, feel free to send them via chat. If you have any questions, feel free to send them via chat and I'll treat them as I see them. Alright, so once you have been able to determine your marketing strategy, you've known the price you can sell. You know how to get it to the, to the consumer. You've known how to design the product and you know how to inform the, the, the customer about it. Once you have been able to do that, it should kickstart the consumer behavior process. Now, once you are able to promote your product, it should make, make the customer realize that. He needs that product, which is what we call problem recognition. For instance, um, um, look at the COVID vaccine today. The company that developed it, after they promoted it, they are, yes, we've developed the, the, the vaccine for COVID. Immediately, all the governments, because I mean, the, 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 the customer for the vaccine is governments. Because they are not selling to private individuals. So it's governments are the customers at this point, although we, the citizens are the final consumers. But the government are the customers. So what triggered was that the government realized immediately that they need the vaccine. Which is a problem recognition. So once they recognize that, okay, we need this vaccine, okay, how many types of vaccine are there? There are about three variants down. We have the um, the Johnson and Johnson. We have the Modela and then we have the Oxford, which is the one that we bought in Nigeria. You know, so you now start looking, okay, which one, how many variants are there? There are three variants. Uh, which one is most effective? You know, and that's what we call information search. You understand? And then alternative evaluation is where I say, okay, which one is more effective? Is it uh the G and G that the Johnson and Johnson that is more effective? Can I find a cheaper one? Which one is, which one is best for me? So you start looking at, okay. Other ones, are they available, other available options that may be better for me, that may be a better fit? So, once um you have been able to, to look at all the alternatives and pick one. Then, then the customer, then you buy the product, you pay for it and then after you pay for it, you use the product. And once, after you have used the product, then you consider yourself, okay, this product is good, should I continue buying? Or should I stop from there? So those are the steps in the consumer, consumer making process. Alright? Um, so once that has happened. Once, once that has happened, once this post, post uh evaluation, post purchase evaluation, then you can see. Whether the customer, we can now see the outcome, whether the customer is satisfied or dissatisfied. So that is um the marketing uh, marketing strategy formulation process. From the marketing analysis up to the end when the customer is either satisfied or dissatisfied. Um, now, let's look at some of the external factors that will affect consumers and, and, and consumer decision-making process. Uh, the first one we have here is societal culture. Um, the culture of where you are will definitely affect how, uh, the kind of products you buy. Um, for instance, there was a, I remember an issue one time that MTN had. In the north, I think they put up a billboard and the contents of that billboard sparked an outrage in the north. Because their culture didn't allow it. But that same billboard had been put, you know, several in, several places in the south and was well received. But in the north, they set fire to the billboard. You understand? It was because their societal culture there. Did not allow for such a thing. So the consumer, the consumers, the consumers spoke. The consumer spoke and, you know, they said they didn't want that uh kind of advert. So you, you are able to see how the society can affect uh the consumer's decision. Another um factor that can affect it is subculture. Now, even in the, as we, even in the north, you know, we have different tribes. We have uh the Fulani, we have the Canary. And so on and so forth. We have the Houser and each of them has their own subculture. Generally, in the north, they have a certain way they think, you know, and I don't mean that, I mean that in an academic way. I'm not trying to disparage any, anybody. Also in the south, we have a certain way we think, generally. But also in the south, in, especially, you know, you look at the southwest, you have the Yoruba, you have the um. And even in the Yoruba people, we have the Jebu, we have the Jeshia, we have the Akiti. And all of them have subcultures and the way that they behave. Apart from the general behavior, they also have other ways that they behave uh and those other ways to guide. The consumer uh decision process. Um, another factor is demographic components. So demographics is things like age, sex, um religion and things like that. So your age will definitely determine uh your, what the kind of production you will buy. For instance, people that are, you know, uh, uh around twenty, twenty. Between twenty and thirty, they are setting products that they are concerned about, that by the time. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. The connection went off for a minute. Hello, please, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Yes, I I I'm going to share the screen again. Sorry about that. We disconnected for a minute. Alright, sorry about that. We disconnected for a minute is to be expected. So um so your age and your sex, as I was saying, will determine your um the kind of products that you buy. You know, there are some products that that uh uh men do not buy, so that sanitary towels. And there's some products that we may probably won't buy, so that maybe um singlets or boxers or whatever. Alright, so another factor that may affect your consumer process is I don't know why the chat is not showing. Alright, um Chinoyen, you have uh, you have you have your hand raised. Can you please tell us what the issue is? Christian, Chinon, Yerem. Okay, anyway, so another um factor is social status. Uh that is how much money you have or where you you you. Yes. Hello? Okay, please send a message. You don't disturb the class because you can't hear, or that you can't hear. Okay, please mute yourself and and send a message. Alright, so um social status, as I was saying, social status can also affect uh your ability to 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 or or the kind of things you purchase. As you described earlier, uh not every, not everybody will buy a techno phone, even though everybody, everybody can probably afford one. Uh but and not everybody will buy an iPhone because they probably can't, nobody can afford it. So this, that's social status in play. Uh another issue that may, another factor that may affect you is uh your family. So uh there are some things that may be taboo in your family. There are some things that your father may not like or your mother may not like. And those things will, and naturally you just won't buy those things because you know that your parents don't like it. And that in a large factor is a very, very important uh factor that affects uh the consumer's uh the consumer's decision to buy a product. Now, the final factor is the marketing activities of the of the marketers. So of course, I mean, the marketers are also trying to look for ways to compare or to entice the consumer to buy, and sometimes many of these things work. You know, uh for instance, I'm sure many of you have gone to a supermarket where you've seen that they are doing a special promotion, where you buy, if you buy one, you want products, you get another one free or you get a free gift or things like that. So those activities are marketing activities and they can also um they can also entice a consumer to buy a product. So sometimes just because you want to get that extra gift, you just buy the product. Whether or not you needed it or, you know, so you just buy it. Um. So those are external factors. Those are factors that are external to you as a person. There are factors outside your control. There are things that you met on ground, you understand? You can't, you couldn't have controlled the society that you are born to. You can't, you can't control your age. Um yes, I can see a raise hand from Cadi. Afiz, you can please unmute and and let us hear what you have to say. Cadi Afiz, you have something to say? Cadi Afiz. Anyway, let's move on. So um. What was I? Okay, so you can't control your 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 age, you can't control it. Your family are born into, you can't control it. It's it, those are all factors that are outside your control. That's why they are external to you. You can't control what the marketing, uh what the marketer is going to do. You can't. Alright, so they are all external to you, but there are some things that are internal to you that you can't control. These are things that are personal to you and, you know, are not uh uh you know, you can't control it. And the first one about, uh the first uh factor, internal factor is perception. That is the way you see things. You know, the way you see something is definitely the way the next man sees it. So the two people can be asked to describe something and they will give two completely different descriptions of that same thing. Because they both have different perceptions of that thing. They both have different ways they are seeing it, you understand? Um and I, uh internal factor is learning, which is what you have been able to, what you know, what you, what you have been able to learn. Uh that will also, of course, you know, um right now, there's a lot of concern about the COVID vaccine. So that's something that you have learned. You know, you've learned that there's there are issues. And now that would, that would, you know, to a large extent, determine whether or not you want to go ahead to collect the vaccine or not. You understand? So what you have learned as will shape your 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 decision at the end of the day. Um your memory, what you can remember uh is also important because imagine if uh you you had forgotten that there were issues with the vaccine. You would just take it without, you know, having any pause because you can't remember. But because you can remember that there are issues with it, it might stop you from rushing to take it. Um another factor is motives, what you want to achieve at the end of the day. Why are you buying the product? So you know, you gave the example of the iPhone where you buy the iPhone, why, why do you buy the iPhone? Probably because you want to show off a little. You understand? Not because it's it's so much better than a Samsung, but or a techno, you know. Yes, your motive may also be to have a quality phone. I mean, the quality of the iPhone is much better than the quality of the techno. So at the end of the day, what you want to achieve is uh an important factor in what, in determining what you will buy. Um another one is personality. Uh your personality is, you know, guided by how you behave. How do you behave? At the end of the day, are you the kind of person that you are outgoing? Or are you the kind of person that you like to stay home and read a book? So of course, the person that is outgoing, um the products you will be spending your money on will be more of drinks and eating out, restaurant bills and all that. And the person that prefers to stay home uh at home doing nothing. I've been reading a book, probably spending money on on books, on television, cable TV, uh internet and things like that. So you can see how the two of them, how their personality has has uh changed the kind of things they buy. But we'll be discussing more on personality. All these internal factors, we'll discuss them in depth. They are over the course of the, uh uh over the course of this, of the session. So I just, as I said, introducing them here. Uh my other factor is emotions, how you feel, uh attitudes and values. So the all this will discuss later on. The time is fast spent and I want to give a few minutes for questions. So let's move on. Now, um we just mentioned the internal factors. Now, the internal factors are governed by two factors. The the internal factors are governed by two main elements. The first one is self-concept. The self-concept is how an individual perceives him himself, which then influences how he or she perceives others and the situations that they are in, you understand? Don't worry if you didn't get that, we will still discuss it a bit more uh over the course of the session. And then the lifestyle. The lifestyle is the way an individualized tries to live in a particular manner, given the resources that are available to him or her. Now, the self-concept is, you know, how you see yourself. Do you see yourself as being successful or do you see yourself as being a failure? And or you see yourself as being a good person or a bad person? So there are different ways to look at it, but it is how you see yourself. So when you see yourself as I'm a good person, it will influence how you see others. You know, if you, if you you see that, okay, I'm a good person and I probably won't steal. If you see somebody that is stealing, then you consider that person as a bad person. I don't even understand. You consider yourself as a success and you feel that, okay, you probably deserve to drive a nice car. You may tend to look at people that are not driving nice cars as failures. Not necessarily that they are. Remember, I'm using the word perceives. So perceives, that's your perception, the way you see things, you understand? That's your self-concept. Now, your lifestyle is the way you want to live. So basically, you are, you may, and it's, that's also, you know, you yourself consider the amount of resources that are available to you. Now, there are people that like, that they want to live that club lifestyle. Not that there's anything wrong in it, but that they want to live that club lifestyle. And they may not have the money to do it, but they will still go and spend their last couple on going to the club. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's the way they think that it, that's what makes them happy and they are fine with it. Meanwhile, somebody who likes to stay at home will probably use those resources in a different way. So all those personal uh factors that we mentioned, all those internal factors that we mentioned are governed by these two elements, the self-concept and the lifestyle uh of the depressing ones. So um we will just generally look at the, the, so this is, this this diagram explains how those factors, you see that, what I was trying to say, that those factors are governed by the the ex- the 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 self-concept or 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 lifestyle, sorry. By the self-concept or lifestyle and those things you know, that you know, the things that you need. Your self-concept, how you see yourself and the lifestyle you want to live will now determine the kind of things that you need. And then we now uh once you, once you have determined the things you need, then you will now start the consumer decision process to to be able to get those things that you need. And at the end of the day, once you have bought it, it, those factors will still be governed by external influences or extraterrestrial, the external influences, which will now, that will will translate to whether you are satisfied at the end of the day or not. But we would, over the course of the session, we will take each of all these concepts and explain them further in in further detail so that uh you will to understand. But um uh so for now, we we end this uh presentation and allow for uh questions. So please, if you have any questions, uh now is the time to 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 um to send them. If I send them via chat or if I raise your hand so that I can answer them. Effectively, the presentation is over. So thank you very much for um sticking with us. I hope I was able to impart some knowledge and I hope you enjoyed the session. Thank you. So any questions, we'll take them for next fifteen minutes before we have to end the class. Alright, so Florence, uh please unmute. Florence, please unmute so that you can. Sorry, you know, at at times I can't see the the chat because of I'm sharing the screen. So but I can see the chat now. Please send your questions. Florence, you have your hand raised. Please unmute and ask your question.
Good morning, sir.
Yeah.
Thanks for the lecture, quite insightful. Uh I was gonna ask, uh the the question for consumer change, as in change of lifestyle taste, uh does it not affect their behavior? For instance, now, uh I remember when iPhone started, it took like maybe two years before they make the next iPhone. But now it's like every year you are changing iPhone and before you catch up with the iPhone ten, iPhone eleven is already out, iPhone twelve is already out. How does that affect the behavior of the consumer? Because they're still trying to catch up and next thing you're happy on onto another technology. I don't know if you get my question.
I get it, I get it. Alright, so um, okay, so the reason why, excuse me, the reason why you are having more iPhones coming out is because of changes in in the market. You know, there there's more information out in the market now. It's easier for them to market things and send it out. It's more, it's a way to send what, you know, if if I want to give you all the information about my product, you want to promote my product now and I have a a decent, um I'm seeing those of you that have raised your hand, I'll I'll get to you. Just hold on, let me finish. So if we have a, if we have um, if I want to promote a new product now and I have a decent budget, is it with that, the information will just go round, you understand? And it affects people and, you know, when you want to keep up with that iPhone lifestyle, you understand, you may find that some other things will suffer. You know, because you have to take money from other things to get uh the iPhone. So and the people from, the 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 guys from Apple, they they understand that because of the way that the world is now, that is a social media world and everybody wants to show off. So there was also cashing on that. So they've done their market analysis and they've seen that everybody wants to show off. Everybody wants to be on social media and show off their phone and show off the quality of pictures they can take and, you know, does generally have that lifetime lifestyle uh thing going on. So of course, Apple too is following that train and saying that, well, if you want to show off, let's give you new things to show off. And that's why they keep rushing us with new iPhones. Meanwhile, back in the days before the advent of this social media age, where everybody is really, really, you know, trying to show off. It it was about the, you know, the fact that this phone was so expensive and nobody was, you you know, you can't reach it off to people around you. So if they knew that, back then, the market analysis would have showed them that if they keep releasing every year, then people will stop buying. But now that they know that everybody wants to show off, they are able to release every year. And, you know, and uh and people are buying it. People are, you know, they are doing very well. Uh I don't know if that answers your question. Um Infinix Notes, it I, I can see your hand raised. Are you unmute yourself and and ask your question? Okay. Infinix Notes, it I. Alright, Tai Wu, Tai Wu, are you? Tai Wu, are you? Can you unmute and ask your question? Yeah.
Hello, sir.
Yes, I can hear you. Good morning.
I'm sorry, concerning consumer rights.
Yeah.
Being informed on the product about drugs. There are some drugs you, you, they are passed for you, then you take the drug, there you are.
Ah, you are breaking up. You are breaking up. We didn't hear you. I didn't hear you. You are breaking up. Now you need to, where do you get more service? Okay, try again. No, I I don't think you have good service, I uh. But I think I I I kind of got what you were asking about um some drugs, some sometimes that you take. You know, there's sometimes some drugs you that you take, they don't give you the full uh information, right? So yes, that only happens in countries like Nigeria where we have, although Nigeria is even trying, at least now that is trying very hard, uh but it is uh, the the rights have to be protected by uh the consumer, this is what we call the Consumer Protection uh Agency. Each country has its own. And some of them are active, some of them are not, you know, and it is in active, well, in countries where they are active, the rights are fully protected. But in countries where they are not, you know, there you have things like what you were describing. Alright, um Joseph or John Daly, I hope I pronounced that well. Please unmute and um ask your question. Joseph.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Yes, sir. Um sorry, please, sir, can you explain more on the marketing analysis on the no, question on the marketing analysis, analysis, sir?
Um yeah, I, as I said, we will talk, I just wanted to mention them. We will discuss them over the course of the session, you know, uh we will discuss, don't worry. It's it's part of what we are going to do. And if I, if we are taking it here, what we discuss during that time. You understand? So let's not, let's not rush it. You understand? So let's not, let's not rush it. We will get there. Okay, Bukyoshudi. Bukyoshudi, you have a question? Bukyoshudi. Please unmute so that I can ask your question. Hello, Bukyoshudi. Okay, I have to report their hands raised. Bukyoshudi and Infiniti's notes, uh, Infiniti's note, it's I.
Okay.
Alright, okay.
Hello?
Yes. Okay, so, um, Infiniti's looks, Infiniti's notes, I can see your question here. Your question is. How does demographic components as an external factor affect consumers? Okay, now, your, your age, I believe that there are some things that. Uh, you know, I don't know who you are, but, uh, I don't know who you are, but, uh, I can assume that. There are some things that you will buy today that you were not buying probably ten years ago. You understand? Um, your, your, your sex also would also affect in that, as I gave an example, men don't buy sanitary towels. You understand? They don't buy it because they don't need it. So your, your, your sex has, has determined, you know, the kind of product that you buy. If you go to the supermarket and you are walking past the, the, the shelf that carries sanitary pa- pa- towel as a man. You probably won't see that product. It won't occur to you, even branch there. You understand? So also, um, your religion, you know, would affect in that if you were a Muslim. And now, I, I, as I said before, I'm not trying to disparage anybody. I'm just saying this as, um, uh, an academic example. If you're a Muslim, you will be buying prayer beads, the test B. I, I hope I pronounced that, I pronounced that, that correctly. And as a Christian, it wouldn't occur to me to buy. So I don't know, these are two examples of how your demographic will affect the kind of, the kind of, uh, products you buy. You understand? As a Christian, I'll buy the Bible. The Muslim won't buy. It's not affiliated at them. You understand? So if they went and kept it, imagine if somebody produced, you know, hundred bibles, for instance. Or one might produce one million bibles and it carried it to Dubai to go and sell. This year, they, it might probably not sell more than ten. You understand? But if, um, if instead of, instead of, um, uh, producing bibles. He produced, um, Korans and carried it to, to Dubai, he will sell almost everything. You understand? So also, if you carry Korans to, to the Vatican City, you are wasting your time now. You understand? So that's how your demographic, your demographic can affect, your demographics. You know, of your age, sex, religion, your, your income level. You understand? Also, your income level, so your income level, your, your qualifications and so on and so forth. There are many factors. But each of those things in his own way will shape the kind of, uh, products that you buy ultimately. So are there any other questions? I hope I've answered your questions adequately. If I have not, please send me a message. Um, are there any other questions? We have, um, about three minutes left. Any other questions? Alright, so in the absence of any questions, uh, I think we can call, call it a day. Thank you all for being here and for, uh, participating. Uh, and, uh, so see you next time. Alright, bye bye.